Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 11th regular meeting of council for the town of Quispamcis in 2022. Yesterday, Acadian Day was celebrated throughout the province, and we wish all those Acadians and those wannabe Acadians well as they continue to celebrate throughout the week. And I am a descendant of a good Acadian, so. Also, the pride parade was held a couple of weeks ago, and Councillor Donovan and I attended, and it was a wonderful celebration throughout the downtown area of the city of St. John. The Kennebecase's Public Library is hosting a reopening celebration on Thursday, August 25th, between 6:00 and 7:00, so I invite everyone to come out and celebrate in having our library back after being closed for seven months. Also, I'd like to thank people for their patience. Everyone loves to drive on newly paved roads, and we have lots here in Quispamcis to celebrate about that. So, we do that in response to, of course, roads that are creaky and cracked, and the provincial government has cooperated with us, and they have paved the entire 119 route, and that is coming close to completion. So, we're very happy to have that newly laid pavement. So, I think, and also on that note, I just want to say that as that is a public highway, there's about 7,000 cars a day that travel over the 119. So, we do have a lot of visitors coming off of the Kingston Peninsula through our town on a daily basis, and certainly on weekends, we have lots of people coming from along the, from around the region who are traveling throughout to visit other parts of our beautiful province here in southwestern New Brunswick. So, I'm looking for approval of the agenda. Councillor, just one second. Councillor Biggar, seconded by Deputy Mayor Stryer, on the question. Motion carried, 7-0. I'm looking for the treaty acknowledgement. Councillor Donovan, please.
We would like to respectfully acknowledge that Quispamcis exists on the traditional territory of the Wallace-Stuig, Malacite, and McMack people, whose ancestors along Passamaquoddy tribes signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. We would also like to take a moment to reflect on our solidarity and support for the people of Ukraine, acknowledging that Canada has the third-largest Ukrainian population in the world behind Ukraine itself and Russia. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight, and may we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interests of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Councillor Donovan. I'm looking for a disclosure of interest, if anyone has any on these items here this evening. Seeing none, we will move forward. Presentations, we do not have any. A public hearing. Item 6A, Hamel Drive Developments Limited, PIT number 173732, application to amend CPA Development Agreement, property situated adjacent to Route 119 Swanton Drive and McMillan. In attendance, we have Andrew Harrigan and Bradley Lockard, who are the proponents. Please give your names for the clerk.
Andrew Harrigan.
Brad Lockard.
So, we don't, we appreciate the invitation back. We don't have a lot to add to our original presentation. We, I did receive a copy of correspondence from one resident around, a concern around traffic coming up now Millikan. I'm not aware of who that might have been. From our point of view, we haven't started any work on subdivision. We don't have any crews down there yet. I was aware, though, that Department of Transportation had done some work, or were planning to do some work, on the culvert that runs under the arterial. And it was, my understanding, they were going to be doing some work to test some sort of a new material on the inside of that culvert to extend the life of it. So, I suspect that may have been the case, but I'm not sure, so.
I just want to, so people will know here in the audience and also at home, that for a public hearing procedure, the mayor and council acknowledge that this has been requested, to, and plans to, we plan to consider amending Bylaw Number 38, that we have set apart this day, August 16th, for a public hearing, that we would note that anyone wishing to speak for or against the proposed amendment will be heard and considered by council, and that each person wishing to approach the podium will identify themselves, and that we will have, they will have a five-minute duration in order to address council. So, if you have anything else to add to what has just been said? Thank you. I will go now to the audience to ask if there is anyone who would like to speak for or against. If you do, please come to the podium. Please give your name for the clerk.
James Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Welcome this evening.
Thank you. And I wasn't a complaint. I live at 23 Millikan. So, just know, before I go any further, this isn't against, this has to go in addition to. I'm not against any development. This specifically has to do with the traffic that it's going to bring. And I'll start by saying that on the backside of Swanton Drive is the Shanix complex. Most of the people that go to the left side of the Shanix actually come up Hampton Road, and they come down Millikan and turn left onto Susan to come back around, so they don't have to stop at a stop sign. So, I know this because I walk my dog all around Millikan, Susan, Sunrise, Phillips, Swanton, that whole area that leads down to Hamel Drive. So, I'm aware of the traffic patterns. And so, that said, there are roughly 29 homes on Millikan, and a count of average of 62 cars. And the worst offenders for speeding are the ones who live down at the bottom of the hill. There are friends and family that come and visit. And it dawned on me that I have a dash cam in my truck, while it records everything while it's parking. I have videos of cars doing 90 kilometers plus down the street. So, the point I'm getting at is if there's 29 homes and 62 cars, and people are trying to take the shortest route, if you're adding on 124 units, you might as well assume that that's an additional 248 cars, and they're going to take the path of least resistance, which is down Millikan. I mean, it's just how it is. Now, I'm not against any development. It's nice and quiet right now, and I wasn't complaining about construction crews. But when you come to the top of the hill, when you pull onto Millikan off of Hampton, you can see all the way down Millikan across the arterial onto, what is it, Monarch Drive. So, before the arterial was put in, those two were joined together, and people would pass through there to get around because it was a quicker route. But my, I myself, when you pull onto the street, you don't even have to really push on the gas. As soon as you get to Susan, without even touching, you're already doing over 50, if you don't touch the brakes. So, I get it with the construction crew that came through a few weeks ago. There was a flatbed with a front loader. That's a heavy load. It's try, hard, tried to, it's hard to try and stop that much weight. So, they were going pretty fast. And my point is, there's lots of children on the street that ride bicycles, and they're up and down all the time. Now, when school's in, I live right next to what the kids call Millie, which is the path that goes right across, and they cut from there over to number 26, and cut through the trees, and go to the McGesso. So, a lot of them will just dart right out onto the road and not even look. So, in short, what I'm looking for, yes, you can say it's not a busy street. I get that. But we're trying to look at it from a different perspective. People tend to speed because there's no traffic, and that's what I'm trying to slow down. So, if we're going to add, you know, if we're going to multiply the cars by fourfold, I would like somebody to at least consider that. I don't know if it takes putting in speed bumps during the non-winter season, because I know snowplows can't go over that. Or can we post speed limit signs? I know if it's not posted, the speed limit is 50 throughout the city or the town. Propose maybe putting it down to 40, which is a reasonable speed. I have video of cars passing by at roughly 40 kilometers per hour, and I can provide that if needed. But I also have video of cars that are, like I said before, way in excess of that. I'm just trying to slow people down. That's, that's all I'm asking. And that's my piece.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. I did take a drive out around all of those streets that you just identified, just so that I would have a good handle on, on exactly what we're looking at. And certainly, if you see speeders, the, the people who enforce that are the police, and if you've got that, that knowledge, then please don't hesitate to, to call the police department. They are the ones that would certainly enact the laws. And, and as far as speed limits are concerned, we post seat speed limits in all of our residential areas, and unfortunately, some neighbors want to break the, the speed limits. Yes. Okay, I'm going to ask again if anyone would like to speak for or against. If there's anyone here to speak for or against this item this evening, please come to the podium. I will ask a second time. Is there, if there's anyone who would like to speak for or against this item, please come to the podium. I will ask a final time. If there's anyone who would like to speak for or against this item, please come to the podium. Seeing that there are none, the proponent may address Mr. Meyer's questions. If you wish, you can come to the podium and make a conclude, conclusion to your, or summation.
Thank you. I think this is a similar discussion to the meeting we had a couple of months ago. It certainly sounded then, and it's kind of reiterated again tonight, that it seems like there's a pre-existing kind of traffic flow and speed problem, particularly on Millikan. And all, you know, ignoring the, the service vehicle incident, outside of that, it sounds like there, there's, there has been an issue, and so we're certainly sensitive to that. And I think the same comments apply tonight that did the other night around kind of leaving it to the experts to take away the traffic counts, to look at what traffic calming measures might make sense on Millikan. And we would certainly support, support that. And I think that's what the planning group or the engineering group would have alluded to in the last public hearing.
Thank you very much. Anything else? At this time, oh, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Stryer.
Your worship, can we ask a few questions?
Before we do, I would ask that PAC's written views are read, if you have those in front of you. And then we will go to questions. Councillor Biggar, please.
Just bear with me a moment to find them.
Is that on there?
I don't actually see it, to be honest. Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. Okay, thank you. Thank you, your worship. Notice of decision PID 173732, next to Route 119, having access from Millikan Drive and Swanton Drive, amendment to the developer's agreement. Take notice that a decision of the Quispamcis Planning Advisory Committee was rendered in the matter of your request pursuant to the provisions of the Community Planning Act of New Brunswick. One, matter requested, to request the Planning Advisory Committee recommendations to council for an amendment of the Section 59 Community Planning Act Agreement for the Hamel Drive Developments Limited, formerly Master Enterprises Limited, for an integrated mixed residential development on the property next to Route 119, having access from Milliken Drive and Swanton Drive, again PID 173732. Number two, date, place of consideration of requests, the date June 14th, 2022, Planning Advisory Committee meeting Town Hall. Three, decision of the committee, that the Planning Advisory Committee support the council with the approval of the developer's agreement amendment for the development of Hamel Drive Developments Limited for integrated mixed residential development on PID 173732, subject to the following terms and conditions. One, any variances such as building location setbacks to be considered under a separate application as the final designs are yet to be submitted to the town. Two, the developer shall pay the town the sum of $78,000 Canadian dollars, representing an outstanding levy for municipal sanitary sewage installation to the lands. As part of this amendment, the repayment schedule of the levy must be adjusted with the caveat, there shall be no further adjustments to the repayment schedule regardless of the state of the development, given the period of this outstanding levy. Three, an engineered design stormwater management plan and drainage system stamped by a registered professional engineer licensed to practice in the province of New Brunswick is to be completed and submitted for each phase of the development. Four, a site design showing the creation of the buffering zone, as it relates to the neighboring residential R1 zones must be approved by the town prior to construction. Five, street lighting installation at the entrance to the development shall be installed. Six, all building lights to be downward directed. Seven, all materials and equipment ordered on-site are the responsibility of the developer. Eight, the developer is to enter into a developer's agreement with the town of Quispamcis. Nine, the developer shall undertake to complete the work for each approved phase within a period of two years following approval. Ten, the lands shall be developed in accordance with the most recently dated building and development plans filed with and approved by the town for each phase. And eleven, if the development does not substantially proceed within six months of the date of approval for each phase, the developer shall restore the lands to an attractive natural state, and such restoration is to be completed within one month, dated the 15th day of June 2022.
Thank you, Councillor Biggar. Now, council, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. The developers are here to answer those. Deputy Mayor Stryer.
Thank you, your worship. Mr. Lockard, Mr. Harrigan, I have a couple of questions. One is, I want clarification on your wording duplex. In the original application, the word garden homes were used, and I see now it says duplex. And I, I'd like to have a description of what you're actually planning for those homes.
Garden home, the duplex. The duplex is still a two-unit, side-by-side building. Garden home, essentially the same thing, just different words.
So, they're definitely side-by-side?
Correct.
Garden home, so, thank you. And the second question I had was, according to your rationale for the request for additional units, you went from 109 to 124. I think the original development was 92 back in 2013, so it's jumped significantly. You state that, so that you could look at underground parking and accommodating elevators. Is that, are they now part of your plan to put underground parking and elevators in all the apartment buildings?
Elevators in both buildings, and potentially underground parking in the second, the 42 unit.
Okay, thank you.
But the, yeah, to be clear, the, the first apartment, the current plan does not have underground parking in the first one. And, you know, beyond elevators and underground parking, the increase in unit count had a lot to do with just the economics of trying to develop with cost of construction the way it is today compared to a few years ago as well. So, it becomes a little bit more economical if you have a slightly larger unit count in the building.
So, your worship, so on that, do you have like a current waitlist, anticipating what your, for the first unit?
We don't, we, we, we're not managing an active waitlist, but we've had a lot of people anxiously awaiting us getting started and, and having a timeline to be able to provide additional units to the valley, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Stryer. Any other questions from council? Councillor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. This is actually through you to the Director of Engineering, Mr. Logier. As was discussed earlier, you know, speeding on that street, speeding everywhere in our town, is something that was a common occurrence. And I'm just wondering, because it's already an outstanding issue, is there any, and again, I know that we probably don't have a lot of mobile speed bumps, but during construction, because it is going to be adding, you know, bigger trucks, lots of volume, just for people to get down to that space, is there any, you know, I guess, opportunity for our town to put temporary speed bumps in, especially during the school year? I am a little worried about, because I know it's an area that the kids are traveling and cutting through. So, adding to the increased volume with just even contractors going down, and also heavier machinery, if there's anything that the town can do in regards to even temporary speed bumps or something, and then deal with the speeding, I guess, you know, at a later date?
Your worship, through you, Councillor Luck, the, the process that our engineering group follows is that we'll take the traffic counts that we've done this summer and in previous summers. Once the project is initiated, then we'll put the counters down to, to actually document if there's an increase, what the, the volume increases, the speed increases, and if warrants, then we'll look to reallocate some of the temporary traffic calming measures that we have in, in our inventory. You alluded to the fact that we do not have very many. They are all out, and we're at the stage now where we'll be, we'll be having to come back to council in this current budget to make a request for additional units, because the priority items that have been identified, or the priority locations that have been identified by council so far this year far outnumber our ability to, to put traffic calming units down. So, the only way that we can accommodate all of the requests that have been made to council in this past calendar year is to, to purchase more units. So, we'll, we'll investigate that and make that as part of our budget presentation. But it, it all boils back to documentation of what we have now compared to what will happen once construction starts. Once that construction is in place, then we'll continue, once it's finished and actual occupancy occurs, then we will continue with that same type of program that if there's a documented program, speeding, that the police cannot control through enforcement, then we'll be coming back to council for temporary traffic measures. And if the residents of a particular area want to see permanent measures installed, then that's when they undertake a petition process through our traffic calming policy document to have those installed. But generally speaking, we will not put down traffic calming measures until we have an opportunity to actually document the speeds and the infractions that are occurring. So, that'll, that'll take place, for your worship.
Thank you very much, Mr. Logier. Are there any other questions from council? Councillor Thompson.
I was going to make a motion, your worship.
Okay, at, at this time, we, we, we've heard the proponents who have given their presentation, so we can take a motion from the table, and Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, your worship. I would move that the Hamel Drive Development application be referred to the September 6, 2022. 2022 regular meeting, subject to the consolidated amending agreement being finalized by that time.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson. It's been moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Olson on the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Councilor Miller, is your screen coming up? Motion carried seven, zero. There's also an opportunity for second reading. Um, okay, sorry. Hit it myself. Thank you very much. Item 6B, 318 Hampton Road PID 451815, proposed hair salon. Corner of Hampton Road and Autumn Avenue. In attendance, Madison Wright, proponent. Please come to the podium, state your name for the clerk.
My name is Madison Wright.
Thank you. As per public hearing procedure, council and myself acknowledge that we have been requested to and plan to consider amending zoning bylaw number thirty-eight that we have set this day, August 16th, for a public hearing. And that we note that anyone wishing to speak for or against the proposed amendment will be heard and considered by council. Each person wishing to speak will approach the podium, identify themselves, and have five minutes to address council. So now we will have your, uh, presentation, please.
Uh, so from our last meeting, I don't have anything to add for the presentation, just that, um, I'm willing to do whatever the, uh, Planning Advisory Committee has suggested for the recommendations. Um, we did agree for the, um, upper parking lot for the staff, that it did not need to be paved. It's my understanding that it's okay for that to be gravel. Um, just looking to have confirmation from that as well. Um, but other than that, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask three times if there is anyone here who would like to speak for or against this proposal. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against? Is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against the proposed amendments? Seeing that there are none, we will move forward. You have, um, if you have any final summation that you would like to make? No? I would ask that PAC's written views are read by council. Uh, Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Yes, your worship. The matter requested a request from council for the Planning Advisory Committee's written views on the application to rezone 318 Hampton Road PID 00451815 from residential R1 to residential neighborhood NC. Two, data pla- date, place of consideration of request dated August 9th, 2022, Planning Advisory Committee meeting council chambers. Three, decision of the committee that the Planning Advisory Committee support council with the rezoning of 318 Hampton Road PID 00451815 from residential R1 to neighborhood commercial NC, subject to the following terms and conditions. One, approval of discretionary use as found in Section 18B 1A of the zoning bylaw number thirty-eight to allow residential commercial use at 318 Hampton Road. Two, approve a variance to Section 6P 3B to permit parking within the front yard setback. Three, the main building to be connected to municipal water service for both the proposed business and the residential component. Four, the parking plan identifying fifteen parking stalls for the commercial vent- venture, including one barrier-free parking stall and one decimal five, one point five, parking stalls for the dwelling unit is to be permitted and approved by the planning department prior to the insurance issuance of a building permit. Five, as per Section 6P 5C, the parking area for the businesses, business, not the residential component will be surfaced with hot mixed asphalt, Portland cement, concrete, or asphalt stone chip seal coat. Four, or six, sorry, excuse me, the site drainage plan must be submitted to and approved by the town identifying how drainage will be managed on the lot in response to the introduction of the parking surface in the front yard. Seven, the site plan be submitted identifying a three-meter buffer zone as it relates to neighbor residential R1 zones. The site plan is to be approved by the town prior to building permit being issued. Eight, all signage is approved by the town and is to be located so that not to create a site distance problem along the Hampton Road and Autumn Avenue. Number nine, all building lights to be downward directed. Number ten, the owner is to enter into a developer's agreement with the town of Quispam Sis. And number eleven, the building permit is issued prior to construction. Is only for the property of 318 Hampton Road PID 00451815, dated on this eleventh day of August, 2022.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. At this time, we can entertain a motion. Councilor Olson, please.
Okay. Uh, council give first reading to proposed municipal plan bylaw amendment number 054-04 to redesignate PID number 451815 with civic number 318 Hampton Road from residential R1 to commercial NC, subject to the Section 59 CPA agreement.
It's been moved by Councilor Olson, seconded by Councilor Bigger on the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
What, yes, your worship, thank you. Um, just through you to, um, the Department of Engineering. Was the, um, entrance from the Ham- Ham- Hampton Road, um, taken off? Or is, does that still exist? I couldn't tell by the map.
Hi there. Thank you, your worship, uh, through you to Deputy Mayor. Um, yes, in fact, that was removed and we've agreed to allow the entrance off of Autumn. Um, there was, uh, under further analysis, we discovered there may be a line of sight issue from the Hampton. So it was, uh, safety concern, so we thought that the Autumn, uh, road was more acceptable. Okay?
Thank you for that clarity. On the question. Please vote now. Motion carried seven, zero. Thank you. Councilor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. Move the council give second reading to propose municipal plan bylaw amendment number 054-04 to redesignate PID number 451815 with civic number 318 Hampton Road from residential R1 to commercial NC, subject to a Section 59 CPA agreement.
It's been moved by Councilor Bigger, seconded by Councilor Olson. On the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Motion carried seven, zero. Thank you. Councilor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I'd like to move that council give first reading to propose zoning bylaw amendment number 038-39 to rezone PID number 451815 with civic number 318 Hampton Road from single and two-family residential R1 to neighborhood community, or NC, subject to a section, a Section 59 CPA agreement.
Thank you, Councilor Luck. It's been moved by Councilor Luck, seconded by Councilor Donovan. On the question. Counselor, okay. No questions? Please vote. Oh. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. I, it's nothing to do with the, um, um, project. It has to do with clarification on these motions. I don't understand why there's four motions.
Your worship, through you, in response to the deputy mayor, uh, when lands are rezoned from one use such as, uh, residential to commercial, which is happening in this case, uh, then we require municipal plan amendment and a zoning bylaw amendment. It redesignates these lands once approved to the new, um, commercial on the, uh, municipal plan future land use map. That's why we have to amend both bylaws.
Thank you, Ms. Snow, for that clarity. On the question, please vote now. Uh, Councilor Olson.
Yeah, I'm s- I'm gonna move the second reading.
We're voting on this one first. Motion carried seven, zero. Councilor Miller.
I would move council give second reading to propose zoning bylaw amendment number 038-39 to rezon PID number 451815 with civic number 318 Hampton Road from single to two-family residential R1 to neighborhood commercial NC, subject to the Section 59 CPA agreements.
Thank you, Councilor Miller. It's been moved by Councilor Miller, seconded by Councilor Thompson. On the question. Councilor Luck. Okay, on the question, there are none. Please vote now. Motion carried seven, zero. Moving on to item number seven, previous meeting, uh, seven A, regular meeting minutes. Councilor Thompson.
I, your worship, I, I move that the, uh, minutes be approved as prepared.
It's been moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier. On the question. There are none. Please vote now. Motion carried seven, zero. Moving on to item number eight, unfinished business. Council's review of items referred to the strategic plan, item 8A1, proposed smoke-free places bylaw number 060, memo from town solicitor concerning legal opinion on readings of bylaws, previous and existing councils. Councilor Luck.
Thank you, your worship. Um, just in terms of, um, I don't really have a motion yet. Um, but based on our, uh, Mr. McPhee's suggestion, he did say that, um, you know, it's at the discretion of council that we could do a third reading of the bylaw. Um, in light of Miss, uh, Councilor Bigger's concern, um, what I would propose is perhaps at the next meeting, we review the original presentation of the smoke-free bylaw before a motion is put on the floor.
Thank you. This is at the pleasure of council. It was recommended by, uh, our solicitor that if council chooses to go back and review the previous presentation for, um, uh, first and second reading, that we could do that, or that we can move forward today with, uh, the third reading. Councilor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, thank you, Councilor Luck. Knowing that three out of the four voting members were, were the only ones here for first and second reading, I think it would be appropriate not to do it tonight, but to actually, for those that haven't looked through the bylaw, to make sure that they understand it and then they can vote whether they're in agreement or not. So I would, uh, propose we don't do it tonight, but we put it, maybe it takes two meetings, I'm not sure, because I'm, I'm looking at Councilor Thompson. It took a while for us to go through the whole process, so, um, that way we can either finish it or, or drop it, so. But I don't think we should do it tonight, because I don't think everybody's read and knows all, all of the background. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Miller, Councilor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, you know, the, as Councilor Luck points out, the solicitor, uh, essentially said, you know, work this out, more or less. There's sort of no hard, fast rule that could be found. Uh, there's sort of an argument to be made from both sides about whether to go back to start again and, or, or rather, whether you can read a third reading now or what have you. But anyway, um, I sort of, uh, have been studying the issue and came prepared to, uh, uh, even though I'm the one who said, hey, hang on, maybe we need to go back, you know? I certainly came prepared to discuss this tonight, but I defer to the will of council on that, and should there be an appetite to hold off and, uh, sort of reflect a bit, that's fine. Uh, I, I guess I would say that, uh, you know, I certainly have great respect for the work that's been done to, uh, study, uh, the importance of, uh, you know, the, the dangers of, uh, smoking, uh, the addiction of smoking and so on. Uh, I'm fully satisfied currently that our provincial Smoke-Free Places Act, uh, is the proper course forward. Uh, and, uh, but if, if, uh, I guess it would, if, if there's a, if there's a, sort of an alternate motion being presented to defer or table this for the time being, then I'll go along with that, you know? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Luck. And in looking at this, and, and I'm going to remove myself from the chair, uh, we do have a provincial act that prohibits smoking in public places. And that, uh, that has always been what we have followed within the community. I have spoken, uh, to two police chiefs, uh, the current one and the, and the former. And, uh, it is something that would come with, uh, fairly significant costs in order to do the, uh, the management of a smoking bylaw. And that would mean that certainly, uh, any fine would have to cover, uh, the costs that are involved in that. And that could be the cost of, if somebody argued their ticket and had to go to court, that, that could be, uh, the cost of a police officer and a prosecutor in moving forward. So it does at this time come under the, uh, provincial laws. And I know in my little tour around, um, uh, the, the previous proponents, uh, in the Susan area, uh, Susan Street area, I stopped at the Quispam Sis Memorial Ball Field and looked at the, uh, the rules on the huge placard that we have there. And the very first one was no smoking on any of our on any of our public areas according to the provincial act. So just to bear those things in mind as well. Councilor Miller, thank you. I'll return to the seat.
No, thank you, your worship. And I guess those are things that, again, speaking for myself, I don't know all about the provincial act. So I think those are the things that we bring forth and just see, and then we, like I said, I just want to get this done, one way or the other. So, but I think if people see both, both, and if they think the provincial covers enough, because I'm sure things will probably change in three years, since we started this, I think, three years ago. But, so anyways, I'm okay with just, if somebody wants to bring some information back in the next few meetings, then we decide where to go. So I don't know the difference between the provincial act. I mean, you just eloquently told me a lot about it, but I've never actually read it. I've seen ours, but.
Thank you, Councilor Kirk and Councilor Miller. And I guess the other side to that is, you know, how it aligns with the strategic plan and what it is exactly that a bylaw would do insofar as, is it to prevent smoking in our town? Is it a health issue? Is it both? I'm just not sure where this is going. So I guess we need some clarity with that. Councilor Luck?
Thank you, your worship. And I guess to your concerns, that's exactly why I propose that we bring it back as a presentation, because a lot of these things were addressed three years ago when it was presented. The Smoke-Free Places Act has not changed since that time. The pictures that were in the PowerPoint showing our town littered with cigarette butts that not only, you know, cause harms to our health, but also pollute our environment. So there's a lot of other issues that should be discussed. So based on the comments tonight, you know, again, I think that there needs to be a discussion versus a lot of red herrings that are very typical, that, you know, in this kind of discussion. You know, they're not new. We've heard them before. But, you know, again, if, you know, as Councilor Miller said, I think three or four of the counselors that were here previously heard the presentation with the same Smoke-Free Places Act and put two, you know, positive readings through. And in light of us starting to implement it prior to COVID, seeing the positive impact of workplace wellness, I think that was also another positive to this. So, you know, again, and I think to your other question around, you know, does it meet with our strategic plan? We're not telling people with a Smoke-Free Places bylaw that you can't smoke. We're saying, please don't smoke in our public places, because we know the 7,000 chemicals that secondhand smoke, you know, brings with it actually is harmful to everyone's health. So it's a health and safety initiative that is actually very clearly laid out in the municipalities act. That is one of our responsibilities. So I guess in light of that, I would make a motion that we put it down as a presentation on one of our future agendas, so the presentation can be reviewed and a thorough discussion can be had to answer the concerns and questions of council.
Thank you, Councilor Luck. And the question would be, who will be doing that presentation? Because when this was presented in the past, Councilor Luck, it was brought forward by you as a citizen. And, and now I'd like to know who will be doing this presentation from the floor.
That to the clerk, so I'm guessing I can't make the presentation as an expert. Okay, but I couldn't excuse myself for voting. Maybe we can work it out afterwards, and, you know, I mean, again, I'm not the only one in New Brunswick that, you know, is concerned about this. We have the Heart and Stroke Cancer Society.
Point of order, I think it's, it's clear that smoking is an issue. I certainly don't want to see people smoking or beginning to smoke, but I don't think we'll get into the presentation this evening. So if, if we have a motion to go forward with this, please, somebody make the motion, and we will go forward. And as you said, Councilor Luck, we'll figure out how we're going to present this in the future. Councilor Thompson, please.
I don't know whether to make it a tabling motion or to make it a...
A motion to refer or a motion to postpone until we determine, I guess, how it's to come back to council through presentations or...
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilor.
Just, just what the town clerk just said. Yeah.
A motion to postpone. So it's been moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Miller. On the question. Councilor Bigger?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to clarify one thing, and I'm sure this is, you know, this threatens to become a heady discussion for us, I think. But I, I just want to, I'm sure that Councilor Luck didn't mean to impugn the integrity of people who disagree by saying that there are red herring issues. Keenly, honestly felt fact-based opinions that dissent from hers are by no means less credible on their, on their face. So I just wanted to, I guess I would caution all of us to avoid kind of emotionally charged references like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bigger. Councilor Luck?
Thank you, your worship. I want to apologize for Councilor Bigger or any other counselor if I offended them. That actually, that wording is in the literature, based on some of the comments that were made. So I didn't intend to insult any of council, but in the tobacco world, the comments that were made have actually been documented as red herrings. But I will apologize because it was used out of context from academia. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Luck. We have a motion. I don't see it there. Counselor, it was moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Miller. On the question, Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship. Just on the question, on the motion, it's to go forward. Could you read the motion again, please? I'm sorry.
Your worship, actually, it is helpful if we just had a reason, but we have to postpone to future agenda. And we're postponing it to a future agenda, pending clarification on, just, if the motion could be clarified a bit, it would be helpful for us to know when to bring it back and what, what we're looking for, for action.
Just one second.
Is it to clarify if you can present?
Bring in. So I can, I mean, again, depending on someone else's availability, we'll have to find out when they can come to present the same presentation and answer any questions that council may have.
Councilor Thompson has a conflict here, please. Just one second. No. Councilor Thompson?
Yes, your worship. My motion didn't have anything to do with presentation. My motion had to do with more, like, have more time to actually discuss whether the provincial act covers it, whether, you know, the, the cost of non-smoking. See, those are the things that need to be discussed. And, and also, I have got to go back and review the whole bylaw, because I haven't read that bylaw in three years. So I'd like to be able to go back and read that.
The presentation or the, or the provincial act that you have to go back?
No, the bylaw that we gave first and second reading to.
All right. Madam Clerk, did you get that?
To postpone to a future, time to determine if the provincial act covers this and time to review the proposed bylaw. And I'm not sure if you want it to continue to keep in the motion to clarify the presentation component.
Sure.
Councilor Thompson?
Sure. Absolutely.
All right, and Councilor Luck, we have a motion on the table. If you're going to make another motion?
Can I just ask clarity for the motion? So I guess the way I'm seeing it is because in the last agenda item, we actually had the proposed bylaw. We had the presentation. We had all the documents. So I guess how I'm seeing it is that all that would happen in a meeting, people would have time to read all the documents, come, ask questions, and get clarity at that point. Is that what kind of the motion is saying?
Okay, I believe the motion from Councilor Thompson also requested more clarification on the Provincial Smoke-Free Places Act?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, your worship. I know there's been a lot of questions of what needs to be included, and so it can lead to some confusion. So, you know, I have a lot of questions that I need to have answered, and I don't know if they're going to be answered at the next meeting or if I'm going to submit those prior and ask the question, because I haven't, you know, it depends on the question that I have, what expert is going to answer my question, whether that be a financial expert, whether that be somebody in the health field expert, somebody, you know, whether that goes to our police force expert. So I'm just a little confused on who, the scope of this, and how many people that we actually need to hear from their voices as to exactly what we're getting into, as well as we've already identified the provincial Smoke-Free Places Act as well. So there's a lot of meat to this whole bylaw in preparing a bylaw such as this and whether or not it is within the mandate of the town of Chris Pampas.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Councilor Bigger?
Thank you, your worship. I really hesitate to add any confusion to this, but I just want to, I'm just sitting here thinking about, I, I'm listening to the deputy mayor's comments, and I was sort of pondering the same thing myself. And I, if, if I could just maybe advocate that we sort of circle back to what's on the docket here tonight. We have before us an opinion from our solicitor indicating that we can essentially, as a council, make the choice for ourselves whether we think it's appropriate at this time to proceed with a third reading of the proposed bylaw as it was brought forward, first and second reading a couple of years ago, and then interrupted by COVID. So it would seem that we have to decide whether we think it's appropriate to go forward or not. We don't seem to be discussing, maybe it's being lost in the nuance here, but I think that if we, for example, vote, maybe altering the motion is, is what we're doing for that, and that's fine. But I would be prepared to vote on that motion to move forward about whether we should have a third reading tonight or not. And then if, if a motion wants to be introduced, or if someone would like to introduce a motion for us to come back to this and discuss it further, assuming the third reading motion was defeated, for example, just as an example, then that would be fine. But I, I'm a little, I'm a little unsure how, I'm not, I'm trying to be sensitive and be accommodating here, but I'm not really interested in just creating another opportunity for a third-party proponent who has no connection to our town to come in and just give a report on the dangers of smoking. You know, I suppose it's far more detailed than that. I'm sure it is, but I, I have questions as well that I worry would be not addressed in the way that we're seen to be moving towards here in terms of moving forward. So I, I don't know what to do other than to register my concern about that, but...
Thank you, Councilor Bigger. Councilor Olson?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to say that I will not be supporting the motion to, to refer this to some future discussion. I don't really believe in the necessity to control the smoking further than the provincial regulations, and so I will be voting no.
Thank you, Councilor Olson. So at this time, we have a motion on the table to get more information regarding the existing first two readings and on the provincial act. That's where we stand now. We don't know who the expert would be to come in and speak on this, nor do we have, right now, we have in our package a motion to go to third reading, I believe. So we need to straighten that out as well. So let's, I guess we, we have a motion in front of us. And Madam Clerk, would you mind reading that one more time?
Moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Miller, to postpone this item to a future agenda, to provide more time to determine if the Provincial Smoke-Free Places Act covers this and time to review the proposed bylaw and to clarify who can make presentation.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson. On the question?
Can I rescind that motion? At this time, before?
You can withdraw your motion.
Yeah, withdraw my motion, not rescind my motion. Can I, whoever seconded, I'm not sure.
Councilor Miller, the motion is being withdrawn. I think Councilor Thompson, did you, are you done? Just one second, Councilor Miller. I'm sorry, I'm used, so you've, you've retract the motion?
Yes.
Did you have a new motion?
Yes. I would move that we, oh my gosh, it's, I would move that, that we vote, give this a chance to have third reading on this, the bylaw, smoking bylaw that's before us right now, and see what happens with that before we do a whole bunch of other motions.
Thank you, Councilor Thompson. Councilor Miller?
Just to confirm, so I, both are kind of the same thing, but you're just basically saying, on the solicitor's note, he said we could go to a third reading, but you're saying we're going to vote whether we could potentially do a third reading?
Your worship, we, I mean, council acknowledged they have lots of concerns and questions about voting on the motion. So I think to make a motion, to vote on the motion seems a little backwards, to be honest, no offense intended. But I think the motion either needs to be the motion that was on the floor or the motion that Councilor Bigger had suggested that we vote on, you know, what we want to do. Do we want to agree to go back to the starting point? Or go to third reading as per the, our solicitor's suggestion? But I think, I mean, there's been numerous questions around the table and acknowledgements that people haven't read the document. So to make a motion to say we're going to vote on something that we're not informed on is irresponsible, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, oops, thank you, Councilor Luck? Wait, had a seconder? No, okay. Councilor Bigger?
Thank you, your worship. Just to clarify, I did say that I was willing to proceed with this tonight, that I've spent time in the last month studying this, and I came prepared to vote on this motion tonight.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion on the table. It has not been seconded. Councilor Olson?
Just, I'll second the motion, your worship, just to vote on number three, third reading. If it passes, then it's, it's finished. If, if it's not passed, it's also finished. It won't be taken any further.
Point of order was called by Counselor Luck. Counselor Mil.
Thank you, your worship. Since the third reading wasn't in our package and most people haven't read it, I don't think we can do a third reading right tonight. I mean, I was there for first and second. My whole, I thought this whole thing was whether, if people want to vote for the solicitors, is it able to go to the third reading? That's a vote yes or no, and then you can defer to whenever. I don't care what date, you just say it's deferred. And if people say no, then it's done too, then it will have to come back to the start. So I think that's really what the motion should be because third reading wasn't in our package for right now. And we're trying to vote on a third reading, so.
Thank you Counselor Miller and Counselor Luck did call point of order on that motion. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Miller and if he wanted to put a motion forward with what he just said, I would certainly second it and then we can just vote.
Thank you Counselor Donovan. Madam Clerk, can you get us back on track here?
Yes, your worship. In the procedural bylaw, when a point of order is called, raised by a member, when it is thought there is a deviation from the agenda or the rules of order, when a member is called to order from the chair, the member shall cease speaking immediately, notwithstanding section A. A point of order does not require a secondary, is not amendable and normally is not debatable and is decided by the presiding officer. It is debatable only if the presiding officer is on shore of the answer and opens it to the floor for debate.
Thank you. Because of the uncertainty and because of the point of order, I believe that we should be moving forward with, and I don't know if we have a motion on the table right now. You withdrew yours and Counselor Miller, you put a motion on the table, I believe?
Okay, my motion, I can make a motion, your worship, is that we, oh, sorry.
Thing by Counselor Thompson, which wasn't seconded, is that still, is that removed now?
The motion by Counselor Thompson was not seconded, so it is.
Okay, yes, okay.
Okay.
I can rescind that one too.
Okay, so given that. Thank you. We know that it went through first and second reading. It was incumbent upon council to do their due diligence at this table to read all the previous readings, information and documentation that was presented. According to our solicitor, it was up to this council as to whether or not we would vote this evening. Given that, given the responsibility of council, again, it is the responsibility of each member to read the information. If they were not here prior to election last May of 2021, it was incumbent upon them to get caught up on that information. Given that, I am going to go forward with the motion that was given in your package. So if that could be read, if that came forward. There was no motion?
No. There is a motion on the table. Third and final reading.
No, I.
The bylaw was in the package.
Okay, thank you. At the last meeting, we did have from previous history, the first and second motion. At that time Counselor Luck did make the motion to move forward with counsel, with the third reading, which was interrupted or called for point of order by Counselor Bigger until we spoke to the solicitor on that issue. We've done that and now we can move forward. Madam Clerk.
Oh, sorry. Make the decision on the rule, on the call to order. So there is a motion on the table right now, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Olson, that third reading be given to the proposed Smoke-Free Places Bylaw number 60, I believe it is, number 60. That's the motion on the table.
And that was the motion that was called for at the last meeting. As I say, with a request coming from Counselor Bigger for the solicitor to give his opinion on that, which he did. On the question. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship. So on the question, I'd like to know if this bylaw has been costed out. And I would also like to know what measures are taken that I don't see in the bylaw. Our measures are taken for people that are, have an addiction to nicotine as to what measures would be put in place to help them as well as offset costs. It's, I know it's, I'm just asking the question because those are not in the bylaw. So those are my questions regarding the bylaw.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Schreier. And I don't.
Thank you, your worship. I'm not sure if, I mean, I guess HR and Dana were kind of leading this. And unfortunately, Joannie from HR has gone to a different organization. My understanding was that just prior to COVID, they were bringing in some smoking cessation healthcare providers from the community to do some presentations with staff about rolling out the bylaw in-house. As well as there was plans to do some local initiatives with pharmacies in the town in regards to nicotine withdrawal management. And there are some national programs to get free samples of nicotine withdrawal or nicotine patches. And we also have a local physician that has also volunteered to help with prescribing of any pharmacotherapy that's needed. But again, that was kind of being worked out in-house prior to me being on council with HR and I believe Dana. So I'm not sure if Dana has anything else to add in regards to that. I guess it was so long ago that there's still a lot of things that need to be flushed out, but that was the initial plan as far as I'm aware.
Thank you Counselor Luck. Ms. Perten Dixon, Director of Community Service.
Thank you, your worship. Some council will recall, we budgeted $15,000 a couple of budgets ago to implement the bylaw. And that was really for legal opinion and whether we could implement a bylaw as such, I believe. We did that. We created signage and stickers to go on existing signage. We're going to put them on town vehicles and what have you. So it was really about promotion and awareness. We didn't have a budget for enforcement because the police department told us they would not be able to enforce that bylaw. And we don't have the resources in-house to do that. So at that time, it was discussed that we would be setting the expectation for residents that we were a smoke-free community. And with that, that would be, obviously with the current Provincial Act, our spaces are all designated smoke-free, but so the difference was going to be sidewalks and streets. And of course, the impact to the complex and to the beach house when hosting events and such. So making those users aware that they'd have to leave the property in order to have a cigarette. But there was not an intent, if you will, for staff to have the ability to enforce this bylaw. Again, it was, at that time, it was all about setting expectations for our residents. So really that money at that time was designated towards communication and awareness of the new bylaw, knowing that we wouldn't have the ability to enforce that. And in fact, in my research with the province and their bylaw, so they have three different departments that enforce that bylaw, whether it's with regard to public safety or work safe or what have you. And they've never charged anybody for violating that. The person that I spoke with, this is again going back a couple of years, but at that time, they hadn't charged anyone. So to the point earlier, there would need to be obviously budget allocated in 2023 for that, if we were going to go to court, if we're going to, if we were going to look at, you know, charging anyone with that offense or if it's still going to be setting the expectations and about awareness and education, I believe. And I can't speak, the treasurer's not here, to how much is left. But I believe a good three quarters of that budget would be left. I'm not sure the amount. But we just started getting into approving or creating the signage and the stickers and those promotional pieces. So that's a bit of an update from my recollection.
Thank you, Ms. Perten Dixon. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. I'm just incredibly confused. I'm trying to figure out, you know, I understand this is extremely important and very much so for, you know, certain people on this council. But I'm just trying to figure out if the Director of Community Services just said that the police are not willing to enforce it. Then I'm trying to understand because Mr. Colburn is our bylaw enforcer, I believe, and we're not going to have him driving around town looking for people that are smoking. So I'm confused on why we're creating a bylaw that is not going to be enforced because it kind of contradicts itself. So I don't know if I'm not understanding something or if it's, I don't know, but thanks.
Thank you Counselor Donovan. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, your worship. Under the current proposed bylaws, it stands under the administrative penalties. The Director of Community Services points out sort of education, you know, and awareness. And I think those are vitally important actions that we've taken as it stands currently, what we've taken. And I also believe that as a town staff to try with great gusto to encourage staff to take advantage of whatever, you know, towns supported or offered cessation products we can offer or programs we can offer, I fully support that completely. Like most everybody, in fact, I can't, in 2022, I can't imagine that there's anybody who thinks that smoking cigarettes is a healthy activity or who would contend for that. But that being said, the administrative penalties in this bylaw don't speak at all to awareness or education, only to penalties of tickets with a fine attached to them. So there's nothing written into this bylaw that tries to sort of find the middle ground. This is a bylaw that seeks to see somebody smoking on a park bench on a street by themselves, pull up to them, hand them a ticket, and that seems to be the modus operandi for trying to strongly encourage our folks to not smoke or, you know, to eliminate, mitigate smoking activity on any sort of public areas. I just want to quickly reference as well, there was an interesting article I was reading as I was going through over this issue over the weekend from October of 2021 about the Halifax smoking ban that came in three years ago that has been, and it's a, it's a very, it's on global news on an article there. And the CEO of the Downtown Business Commission basically has said that it's been virtually useless. It hasn't really stopped people from smoking. In fact, most people say that people continue to smoke just as they did. They have loads of receptacles around that they didn't have before because the HRM spent a lot of money to, you know, create that sort of thing and create these kind of, I think it's 91 spots all around HRM that where smoking is allowed. And so I guess they were trying to bear in mind, as the deputy mayor points out, this is an addiction. Clearly, it's not just something everybody does by choice, you know, until they decide maybe to give it up. But essentially, the article goes on to say that, you know, three years later, there hasn't really been much impact and there's been a lot of money spent in the HRM on this. As Counselor Donovan points out, you know, it is, it does seem, it's hard to kind of bring those two points together, it seems to me, about how we enforce something like this. You know, I mean, the very nature of smoking is that a person lights up a cigarette and, I mean, you know, you know, the province has under the Smoking, the Smoke-Free Places Act, for example, there's a toll-free line that people can call for violators of the act. But of course, that's hard to do. I mean, that's a cigarette, people go out for a quick smoke, they're done and that's that, you know, sort of thing. But anyway, I worry that we have kind of, you know, I think that we, there's a wonderful spirit in this of wanting to try to encourage people to live their best, healthiest lives. And I fully support that. But from my perspective, I'm concerned a little bit that we're a bit of a solution in search of a problem here. For example, anecdotally, I can't, I've lived in the KV for 16 years. I have never once had to push my way through a blue cloud of smoke in front of Shopper's Drug Mart or Canadian Tire or any other public area, Mexi's or whatever it was before Mexi's, Pizza Delight, whatever. And that's not to say it doesn't happen. And that's not to say that I think everybody should run right out and buy a pack of smokes. I think everybody should try to quit smoking if they smoke. But I don't think it's as simple as that. And I don't think we can legislate courtesy and consideration of one another. We don't have a mandate as a town, it seems to me, I stand to be corrected, on health deliverables outside of a very general sort of 30,000-foot view of wanting to provide the healthiest, you know, sort of happiest lifestyle we can to our citizenry. The province has the mandate of health deliverables and to that end, they have spent millions of dollars developing the Smoke-Free Places Act. And for example, if people are smoking at Walter Jewett Field and they're not contravening our laws, they're contravening the Provincial Smoke-Free Places Act. And I would question who is organizing sports activities down there? What private group is making use of the field or whatnot and not demanding that the folks that use the field abide by that law, for example? And so just to sum up really quickly, I just believe that the Smoke-Free Places Act is doing the job that it's supposed to do. And I think we continue as a town to, you know, support anyone who wants to not smoke. And we don't allow smoking, of course, on our town, in our town buildings and so on, so thank you.
Thank you Counselor Luck. Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you. I have a question and I have a, it's for the Director of Community Services and then a follow-up to whatever that answer is. So earlier you said that we had a budget for the bylaw if it went through. And there was going to be signages and, or signs, I guess, signages, signs, and like stickers and things like that. Have the stickers and things been printed already or like? Because I'm thinking if this bylaw does not go through tonight and we have a stockpile of do not smoke stickers, then maybe we can make use of them somehow. Do you know what I'm trying to say? Does that make sense?
Thank you Counselor Donovan. And we do follow the Provincial Act, but I'll let this go to Community Services Director, Ms. Perten Dixon.
We do have some signage and stickers printed. We had them done in advance of third and final reading, not a lot, but we have some. And I'm not sure actually if this would, if this is bylaw, I'm thinking at the time it might have been bylaw 53. And now I'm hearing that might be 60, so I'm. And now I'm hearing that might be sixty, so I'm I don't think we'd be able to use, if we moved forward, I don't think we'd be able to. To use them anyway, because it's been a couple of years we've had bylaws passed since then, so.
Thank you, Ms. Perton Dixon, Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship, I just want to provide a bit of clarity on some of the comments, um the. Kind of the whole impetus of bringing this bylaw to Chris Pampis was number one. Um you know, to kind of hold us accountable for our mission, I mean, we've kind of changed our mission and vision, but it still kind of holds true in terms of. Being an active, healthy community, um and three years ago, when I brought it to council, it the the. Impetus of the bylaw is not to force people to quit smoking, what you do on your own personal time and your own personal space is none of our business. The impetus was to promote a smoke-free space on town-owned properties. So right now, currently with the Smoke Free Places Act, you can smoke nine meters away, so basically. You know, in between Town Hall and the daycare, you can go and light a cigarette up, um. You can um smoke at the Qplex nine meters away, the issue is, is people abide by that unless. It's windy out, it's cold, it's raining, it's snowing, and then they move closer to the door. And you know, our thinking was promoting a healthy environment to denormalize smoking and to minimize. People having to walk through clouds of smoke, it you know, they've done it through New Brunswick at hospitals. So if we can do it at a hospital, I'd like to think we can do it in a town. Um but really, the the impetus was not to force people to quit smoking, but to think twice. And to promote a healthy and safe environment to protect everyone from secondhand smoke. And also, the impetus was the pictures in the PowerPoint. Where even with the Smoke Free Places Act as it stands today, there was cigarette butts. In in the mulch outside the Qplex, outside the fence at the ball field, so again, it was really creating the mindset. And the expectation in our town that we are a healthy, active community, and we're trying to promote. You know, I guess behaviors that don't harm anybody, um. And then also, the um municipalities municipalities Act does talk about promoting health, safety and welfare as part of our mandate, so. It is definitely part of our mandate, and I think it's telling um that I know that um. Our previous HR manager spoke um at one of the um open sessions about the Smoke Free Bylaw. And had um you know, kind of shared that even when we kind of did a soft launch in-house. Just knowing the bylaw was coming, we had, I believe, like five employees participate and three quit smoking. That's a wonderful kind of side effect of a smoke-free bylaw, because you're creating an environment that's supportive to people. Uh we know seventy percent that smoke want to quit, and sometimes you need that extra help, um but it's not to. You know, but I guess it's just to give us a bit more meat on our other publicly owned. Locations to be able to promote a smoke-free area, so when kids are coming in and out of the arena, or when families are going in and out of the Qplex. Um you know, we have a bit of teeth, and I think even in previous discussions with police, you know, they're not gonna be running out. You know, every day trying to enforce a smoking bylaw, but if you look at all of our bylaws, our fireworks bylaw, for example. Or you know, there's lots of bylaws in our town that are very challenging to enforce, um but again, that doesn't stop us from trying to do better. So anyway, that's, those are just to address a few of those concerns.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Okay, we have a motion on the table. And we are waiting for Counselor Donovan to come back. So the motion was moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Olson. The motion that we are voting on, Ms. Snow.
Yes, your worship, uh third reading be given to Propose Smoke Free Places Bylaw Number Sixty. And I would like to point out, it wasn't advertised to be summarized, so if. Council's considering considering third and final reading, the bylaw is to be read in its entirety.
Thank you, on the question. Counselor.
So is the bylaw, like with this vote, is this bylaw um. Kind of signed, sealed and delivered, or is it a, like it was kind of. I'm not sure, kind of how much.
Go ahead, Ms. Snow.
Yeah, the the motion is to give third and final reading, is my understanding of the bylaw.
Counselor Thompson, you requested third and final reading of the bylaw?
Yes, I did.
She answered that, yes, she did. On the question. Please vote now. Okay.
Uh just bear with me one brief moment here. Smoke, we forgot him, that was really lame. I was just looking at it here, here we are. Okay, it's a four pager, so bear with me. Bylaw number zero six zero, bylaw of the municipality of Quispam Sis with respect to smoking in public places. Would, do you need the authority and interpretation as well, or or just the actual? Okay, this is the whole thing then, whereas section ten of the Local Governance Act. Uh SNB twenty seventeen uh C eighteen provides municipalities with power to make bylaws respecting. A, the safety, health and welfare of people and the protection of people and property. B, people, activities and things in, on or near a public place or place that is open to the public. C, activities that may cause nuisances, and D, the management and control of roads, streets, highways and sidewalks. Now therefore, the council of the town of Quispam Sis hereby enacts as follows. In this bylaw, electronic, eh A, electronic cigarette means a vaporizer or inhalant type device, whether called an electronic cigarette or any other name. That contains a power source and heating element designed to heat a substance and produce a vapor intended to be inhaled directly through the mouth. By the user of the device, whether or not the vapor contains nicotine. B, municipal property means land owned or occupied by the town and includes all buildings and structures located thereon. C, public place means a sidewalk, street, highway, road or lane located in the town and includes municipal property. D, sidewalk means that portion of a highway or street between the curb lines or the lateral lines of a roadway and the adjacent property lines set apart for the use of pedestrians. And includes any part of a highway set apart or marked as being for the exclusive use of pedestrians. E, smoke means, A, to smoke, hold or otherwise have control over an ignited tobacco product or another. Ignited substance that is intended to be smoked, or B. To inhale or exhale vapor from or to hold or otherwise have control over. An activated electronic cigarette, an activated water pipe, or another activated device containing a substance that is intended to be inhaled or exhaled. F, tobacco product means a product manufactured from tobacco and intended to be smoked. G, town means the town of Quispam Sis, H, water pipe means a pipe or inhalant type device. Whether called a water pipe or any other name that contains a water reservoir designed to heat a substance and produce a vapor. Intended to be inhaled directly through the mouth by the user of the device, whether or not the vapor contains nicotine or a tobacco product. General prohibition, point three, no person shall smoke in a public place. Conflict with provincial legislation, four, A, if any provision of this bylaw conflicts with the provision of the Smoke Free Places Act. Then the provisions of that act shall prevail. B, if any section of this bylaw or part thereof is found in any court of law to be illegal or beyond the power of the town to enact. Such section or part thereof shall be deemed to be severable, and all other sections or parts of this bylaw shall be deemed. To be separate and independent thereof and to be enacted as such. Administrative penalties, five, A, all contraventions of this bylaw are designated bylaw contraventions that may be dealt with by notice of penalty. Pursue it to the provisions of the Local Governance Act. B, the administrative penalty for each applicable contravention of this bylaw shall be one hundred and twenty-five dollars. C, a person to whom a penalty notice is delivered may pay the administrative penalty on or before a charge pertaining to the offense has been laid. In provincial court as follows, one, in person at the Kennebec Cases Regional Police Station, Quispam Sis, New Brunswick, in cash or by check. Credit card or money order made payable to the Kennebec Cases Regional Police Force. Two, by mail to Kennebec Cases Regional Police Force, one twenty-six Millennium Drive, Quispam Sis, New Brunswick, E two E sixty-six. Attention, fine revenue clerk by check or money order only payable to the Kennebec Case, Kennebec Cases Regional Police Force, or three. By phone with credit card to the Quispam Sis Main Office at five oh six eight four nine five seven seven eight. A person who pays the administrative penalty shall be deemed to have contravened the provisions of section three of this bylaw. And shall not be charged with an offense in respect of the same incident that gave rise to the administrative penalty. E, if the administrative penalty is not paid in accordance with this section, this per, the person may be charged with an offense pursuant to section six of this bylaw. Offenses and penalties, section six, any person who contravenes or fails to comply with section three of this bylaw. Commits an offense punishable under Part Two of the Provincial offenses procedures act as a category D offense. Enforcement, uh point seven, the following persons are authorized to enforce the provisions of this bylaw. A, a member of the Kennebec Cases Regional Police Force, B, any person or persons appointed by the town for the purpose of administering. And enforcing this bylaw. Eight, uh effective date, this bylaw should become effective on the date of final enactment thereof. First reading, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty, second reading, February eighteenth, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Please vote now. Motion defeated, two to five. Moving on to eight A two. Uh brought forward from May eighteenth of twenty-one, poop and scoop signage, waste containers and public benches. Counselor Miller.
Um I would move that counsel refer this to the twenty twenty-three budget deliberation process and and kind of a question. Is have we, I think we increased them last year though, for this this year.
It's been moved by.
Bags and stuff, I thought we kind of already did that, so. Maybe we need more, I don't know.
Uh Ms. Perton Dixon.
Sure, uh yes, your worship, I just have a couple of numbers here I'll share with council and and perhaps they could give us some direction on whether that. They would like to uh increase the level of service for the budget. Uh we have twenty-two dog bag dispensers, we have a hundred and seven garbage containers, eighty-nine benches. And then forty-eight picnic tables, and that's in various points throughout the town, so um. We are obviously strategically locate poop and scoop bags, garbage bags, benches. Et cetera, at uh trailheads and key entrances and exits to trails, so. Um I believe this was initially brought forward by a resident that wanted um. Poop and scoop bags in a subdivision on the streets and and I did not feel that that was a level of service that we wanted to commit to because. Um as council knows, um it's, once you install benches, garbage cans, the egg dispensers, there's a cost to that. To maintain that asset and then to replace it eventually, so um what we're doing right now is currently um mapping in conjunction with um. Uh the planning department, uh GIS, all where every single one of those items is located, so we will have that all mapped. As part of our asset management plan, and um from a determination of a level of service, we, it will be. Up to council whether what they would like to increase that level of service, but as you know, and I'm I'm wanted, there's, it's about. Uh nine hu, eight, nine hundred dollars a month for um that we pay for pickup of the waste containers. So there's obviously an increase that would cost to that, and the poop and scoop bags, I believe, were ten thousand dollars. Um so again, a cost, I know it sounds small when there's a resident that requests. These um items, but there is a cost to the taxpayers when we increase that level of service, so. That's our existing level of service, and if council would like us to increase that or. Maintain that or or decrease that, then I can prepare a budget with that info, so if if council would be. Uh it would be, give us some feedback as to whether or not that's an appropriate level of service, um that would be something we appreciate.
Thank you, uh we have a motion on the table that's been moved by Counselor Miller, before the question, I'm going to go to the next person in line. Uh Deputy Mayor Skryer, are you seconding that? So it's been moved by Counselor Miller and seconded by coun, uh by Deputy Mayor Skryer. On the question. Whoops, Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship, um I just, I threw you to um Director of Community Services. Um you you know my thoughts on poop and scoop bags, I think. We already pay enough, if you own a dog, you should be responsible enough to bring your poop and scoop bag with you, however. Um I do think accessibility and multi-generational use has increased. For our trail system and some of our recreational facilities. And I guess for budgeting, I would love to see if the level of service should stay the same or perhaps benches, you know, again, so. Maybe some of our seniors that can't perhaps walk, you know, all the, or you know, from the petting gill to the French school. In that section, we have one bench there, but it's a long haul, that's the only bench, so like looking at some of those things. Um just to make sure that, you know, the facilities and and infrastructure we have is kind of accessible and age-friendly for everybody. But when it comes to poop and scoop, I think I'm happy with the level of service for that, but I wouldn't mind seeing a few more. Uh benches just to to make sure that people that are using our our infrastructure, you know, have have a spot to sit if they need it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, your worship, and through your worship to to Ms. Perton Dixon is um. When you, when you, when you're coming back to us in the budget is, one thing, I don't think, I I hope we're not running out of bags, I don't want to supply everybody with bags. But I think to have more receptacles makes a big difference, because people should, in theory, I mean, every suit or jacket I have on has multiple bags in there. So um it's just to make sure we've got enough receptacles and they're picked up on a timely basis, so. Um bring us back your recommendations and what's been happening, and we'll go from there during the budget, thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Skryer, please.
It's thank you, your worship, just through you to um Ms. Dana Perton Dixon. I just wanted to um say too, it seems to be a real problem in the spring. When the garbage cans, I don't know if we take them out for the winter, and but um. I actually have photos of multiple, multiple, multiple bags just throwing on the trails, so. Uh and when I brought it forward to the attention of people, they said, well, there's no garbage pails, and I thought, well. Take it home, but uh anyway, just for your information, thank you.
Services, Ms. Perton Dixon, please.
That's a common problem, every spring, people um tend to drop their bags. It's it's happens every spring, we do take in half of the garbage cans because. They're not accessible in the winter, so you have to have a garbage can that's accessible. For your garbage truck to get near, so we we can't have a garbage can at in the middle of a trail, for example, in the winter, so. Those are factors that that we consider when we uh pick our locations for all these items, that accessibility from a maintenance perspective.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson, please.
Thank you, worship. Whether it's the winter or it's the summer or it's the spring, people walking. By my house, for sure, I don't have a dog, but they certainly deposit their dogs' things. In my ditches and on my lawn, so it's, people are generally really good. But there are some people that won't take it with them, which they should. But it's, it is an issue.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. We have a motion on the table, moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Deputy Mayor Skryer. On the question, Counselor Thompson, did you have anything else to it, no, thank you, please vote now. Motion carried seven zero, moving on to item eight A three. Uh street maps and Q map, Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, your worship, um. I see in uh our council kit, you know, very well illustrated uh maps uh for trails and that. But I'd like to expand that and talk about an overall map of the uh of the town. And the valley, if Rossay wants to be involved, but I use the reference, I use the eh the oldest. Or the newest map, I guess, that we have now, which is twenty-six. But uh, I use the uh, reference, uh, I use the uh, the oldest or the newest map, I guess, that we have now, which is twenty sixteen model. And I've had quite a few comments from neigh- from neighbors and uh, friends that uh, think it's an invaluable. Asset to have, and I don't think that there's a lot of money involved in producing that again. But I would respectfully uh, request that this be referred to uh. Uh, to the budget process and uh, report from the uh, acting uh, C A O to uh. To report to council on on uh, just investigating it further for uh. For uh, regurgitating the uh, map that has been in existence for a quid a few years. The uh, my concern is that there with the growth that uh, Rossay and Quizpam sis is seeing. That um, there's a lot of demand for interest and not everybody's got a G P S uh, uh, you know, map that they can. Or piece of equipment that they can fall to look at an address, and I'd like to see the uh. Uh, see the paper, the paper map. Uh, reinstituted in our, in our communities, so the C A O could investigate whether Rossay wants to. Join again like they did before, or that we uh, that we'd go alone, I think it's, I don't think it's a big cost. Less than five thousand dollars, I think which would be a, a great asset to have, thank you. I'd move that this be referred to uh, to the uh, budget process and uh, and our C A O for a report to council, thank you.
Thank you, counselor Olson. Uh, counselor Thompson, please.
All right, I'm seconding.
Thank you, it's been moved by counselor Olson, seconded by counselor Thompson. That the uh, street maps and Q map question be uh, directed to staff. On the question. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship, um, while I agree with counselor Olson's suggestion, I think, you know, again, if we want to be um, age friendly. Knowing that we do have um, you know, people in the community that don't use internet or have access, I think having a limited supply of traditional maps would be great. The intent of uh, this um, motion was really looking at um. Having more of a uh, summarized condensed map that really highlighted all of our um, infrastructure and attractions, so we have a trail map. But really looking at um, in the first attachment, there was actually um, an attachment from discovery map. Out of Saint Andrews where they have just the main streets and then they really highlight, you know, for example, means cold park. Um, or I mean, model farm, I don't even know what it's called now, um. Him and River Park, you know, so all these different spots throughout the community, the beach. The um, you know, the arts and culture, so then if, you know, people that are new, they actually, it helps them kind of um, you know, understand all the different infrastructure. So that was really the intent of this request was really having something, and again, it could be electronic that people download. Um, but it'd be really nice to have something that not only has our trails, but also our infrastructure, so if someone's new, I mean, our town is growing. Um, and then again, the suggestion was similar to the discovery map, they have a bunch of the businesses, so it could potentially be cost neutral. Because the businesses in the area could help fund it, um, but it, there is an example of, I guess, what the proposal kind of was. Um, and also now with um, envision Saint John, perhaps they'd be willing to partner as. Uh, you know, with their marketing team to kind of get something like this going, cause I do think it's something that would help boost tourism, so people coming to Quizpam sis. Would know all the great um, infrastructure and recreational facilities that we have to offer, thank you.
Thank you, counselor Luck. Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Well, thank you, your worship, and um, I think uh, our master recreational um, plan will have a. A really good handle on mapping for um, all our facilities. Uh, so um, through you to Ms. De- Perton De- Perton Dixon. Uh, is this something that we can, um, that we've had um, sort of on the, on the go and that we can add to? Um, to instead of reinventing the wheel?
Ms. Perton Dixon, please.
Is, so, I'm sorry, I don't quite understand, we used to have a recreation brochure that went out to all the houses in. Quizpam sis seasonally years ago. That, is that what you're referring to, uh, so other than what's online existing? I'm not sure what you mean by on the go, but we have maps online existing for our trails and such.
To be cl- just to be clear, we do have existing maps online for for our trail system and all our and and our recreational facilities that exist today? Or can we just add to our existing mapping instead of, like I said, recreating the wheel?
Maps, or if you go onto our website, and I know that our planner can speak to that because his staff are. Um, are the ones that populate the map, but we have a G I S map that would have all the um, recreation amenities on it.
Welcome, Mr. Culber, thank you, Ms. Perton Dixon, welcome, Mr. Culber.
Thank you, thank you, your worship, uh, through you, so we have um, the engineering department with their G I S team produce maps, P D Fs that we upload. To our website, so these are for trails and the location of our different recreation facilities. Um, this is sort of an ongoing process, um, so we usually create them in a P D F format that you can download. Uh, we have in the past produced maps for utility department, that's sort of a booklet. Uh, that shows all the streets and those types of things, so that's something that we could probably look at producing in the future, uh, sort of in line with. Mister Olson or counselor Olson's uh, request. Um, our, on our website, we also have interactive maps, so that would show our uh, streets and those types of things as well. So, uh, the original. Map that was done back in twenty sixteen was actually was was a initiative, I believe, of a local publishing company, and they would approach the town. To generate those maps and they would actually get sponsorships from various businesses, so it was sort of. A promotion of the businesses that were in in the municipality or in the re- in the, in the valley. And then um, the mapping side of things was sort of uh, s- sort of a secondary to that, so people could find the locations of those businesses, so. We're trying to move everything as much as we can online, uh, and recognizing obviously that, that you know, we have to look at the demographic and what tools are available. So, yeah, so there are maps available online in P D F format, uh, these are updated regularly. And uh, as we get new orthophotos or new imagery, we continue to update to reflect uh, that um, type of information as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Culber, I think there may be a couple of questions here. Uh, counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Culber, for that uh, clarification, I guess my uh. My uh, reference uh, to sending this to include a report back from the C A O. Was also to in- to investigate those possibilities, I realize that it was a, there was a private printer that went out and sold the spots that paid for it all. But I'm saying even if we had to contribute some money, it's not a lot of money, is the point I'm trying to make. Twenty sixteen, I think, is the latest update that we had to the street maps, but they were, they were renewed. You know, three or four times, I've I've got twenty twelve, uh, twenty sixteen, I'm just running out of the copies of them. And I share them with people that have asked for them, but uh, I I think it's a great thing to have, and I appreciate all the work that's being done, the G I S. To keep everything uh, up to date and all that, but uh, I'd still love to see something. Uh, where we're adding a lot of new streets all the time, uh, that the general public could have without having to access something through the, through the computer. And um, uh, something that could be updated every three years or something like that, so, anyway. That's, that was my, that was my understanding and sending it over to the C A O, okay?
Thank you, counselor Olson. Counselor Miller, please.
Uh, thank you, your worship, uh, just a real quick uh, comment through to you, your worship. Is e- even when we're looking at this, it'd be nice, uh, potentially, I I like everything virtually. A lot of places now have little Q R codes, so at the start of every trail, if there's a Q R code, you can scan it, you'll know exactly where you're at, and not, not everybody has phones, but majority do. So it's another way, that way they don't have to search through the website, they automatically have it, especially if they're not from around here, so, just, just a comment, thanks.
Thank you, counselor Miller. Counselor Thompson, please.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, I was just um, curious, and and I know there are various maps on the website. But is there just a link to go to a street map? Not a, not, not with recreation or anything at all, just, just a street map?
Through you, your worship, uh, to my lunch, there used to be, uh, however, I can investigate to make, to see if that's available. Cause most of the things now are on our, on on the initial page of our website, at the sort of down bottom. There is a um, there's a town maps and then there's a link to, to the maps that we have, so. There is an address in the zoning map that you can type in an address and it will actually take you to that specific location. Which gives you information in terms of the actual zoning and those types of things, but just a sort of a, a link to the, to a map itself of the street network. That's something that I will obviously look at.
Yeah, I I just know that I've, I've had um, you know, a number of people ask if we had a street map. Or if there was a street map on our website, and I looked and I didn't find it myself, so I said, no, there isn't, but I hopefully will address that. And just have a street map because people have no idea where they're going, they might be going to visit a relative and they're coming from someplace else away. And they're trying to find the house and they don't even, you know. These are, these are not people, everybody that uses G P S, you know, they just kind of, or put it, they don't have a phone that they can do it with. So it's kind of like, I've, I've had to getting my car and guide them to where they were going.
Thank you, counselor Thompson. On the question. Thank you, Mr. Culber, appreciate it. Uh, madam clerk, would you mind just reading the motion?
Moved by counselor Olson, seconded by counselor Thompson. The issue of uh. Mapping or street maps be referred to the budget process and request a report from the acting C A O. To investigate costs of bringing back a paper street map of an overall, for an overall map of. Quizpam sis and or a K V map shared with Rossay.
Thank you, madam clerk. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. Moving on to item eight B. Uh, counselor uh, Noah Donovan, request for street name equality lane, off landing court. Recommendation from planning advisory committee. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, I can read the uh, notice of decision from the uh, planning advisory committee if you'd like. Um, take notice that a decision of the Quizpam sis planning advisory committee was rendered in the matter of your request pursuant to the provisions. Of the Community Planning Act of New Brunswick. Number one, the matter requested a request for a street name approval, that of equality lane for the laneway between the end of Landing Court and the Arts and Culture Park. Um, it was on August ninth, twenty twenty-two in the um, council chambers during the planning advisory committee meeting. Um, and the decision of committee uh, was that the planning advisory committee support the naming of the laneway from the end of Landing Court. To the Arts and Culture Park and Kennebec cases library overflow parking lot to equa- to equality lane, subject to the following. A street sign is requested to and installed by the town of Quizpam sis Public Works Department. And two, uh, notice is sent out to emergency services and uh, new street distribution list. This approval um, by the planning advisory committee is only for the, for the laneway named herein. Dated the eleventh day of August, twenty twenty-two, and signed by uh, Violet Brown, the secretary.
Thank you, counselor Donovan. Counselor Donovan.
I'm gonna read my motion too, if that's okay. Um, and uh, my motion would be the council support P A C's decision. To name the lane that runs from the end of Landing Court to the Arts and Culture Park and Kennebec cases library. Overflow parking lot to equality lane as recommended by myself, subject to the following, a street sign is requested to. And installed by the town's Public Works Department and uh, a notice is sent out to the emergency services and new street distribution list.
Thank you, counselor bigger, are you seconding that?
Yes, I am.
It's been moved by counselor Donovan, seconded by counselor bigger, on the question, counselor Donovan.
Thank you, I do have a question, I I wasn't sure, I discussed this with Mister Kennedy earlier in the day. I wasn't sure, um, you know, how I would bring it up, but I'm, I'm curious if, you know, if it would be possible to have a small. Um, you know, just like an informational sign beneath the, the um, equality lane road sign, just sort of explaining the, the. You know, the idea behind it, because in my opinion, you know, cause it was my idea, it. To me, it's not just the, any other old, you know, laneway, it's, it's, we've done it for a reason, I I think it would be. Um, you know, helpful to maybe people in the, the Arts and Culture Park in our town to sort of understand why it's named equality lane, I I don't think it has to be. Anything big or anything expensive, you know, if we're going to the trouble of actually getting a sign done, then I I don't see the herman. Having a, a smaller sign below it that just sort of outlines, you know, our commitment to equality and inclusivity, et cetera. Um, so I don't know if I, if I would need to amend my emotion um, to to add in that little piece, but I I was just really confused on, I'm trying to follow the process, so I don't know. How I would do that, so if somebody would like to help me, that'd be fantastic.
The street signs typically only have the name of the street just to uh, avoid distraction and uh. However, I will defer this to the director of engineering, Mr. Loge.
Your worship, with any street name changes, the towns uh, will supply a street sign, the blade sign. They, they run at a cost per foot, so equality, equality lane with the associated blade sign. And posts generally will run in about a hundred and fifty bucks um, to to have that installed. Um, as far as the deck, an expla- explanation sign, the town works department does not order those, so I guess I would. Look for um, some clarification with regards to the narrative that you, that counselor Donovan would like to have on that, and we can get a price quoted for that. Uh, I know that the director of community services has similar, uh, you know, trailhead signs, things like that, that the, that, 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 the logo is used. And we can investigate with, with their company, what community services, what they would charge to print it off, so I don't have a cost associated with that. Um, but again, from, from, from the works perspective, the, the blade sign and the posts are well within our. Operational costs that we would install on a regular basis, so that's not a concern at this stage, it's just a question of what is the narrative? On the deck, on the informational sign, and uh, we can get a costing for council at that stage, and if council wishes to establish a, you know, a budget of. You know, two hundred and fifty bucks maximum, then we can s- we can uh, construct a sign to that. To, so we can, we can fit it in within the, the limits that are assigned to us, so, it's just a question of what you want on the narrative, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. Uh, deputy mayor Schreier.
Uh, thank you, your worship, and I certainly understand where the um, counselor Donovan is coming from, and um, my last experience in um. Uh, sign being dedicated was um, for Mister Monroe up at the high school, and there was a small ceremony. And um, it was uh, actually quite nice, and that may be a suggestion that we could do something like that. And that would be an opportunity to send a message out to the residents of Quizpam sis that this is what this is all about. You know, and have an actual picture of equality lane and where it's at, and um, it would be um, very nice to invite the public to something like that.
Thank you, deputy mayor Schreier, and I think with, as we move further and and develop uh, the uh, Firefly Park. And uh, with the skateboard park there, with the uh, arts and culture center up over the hill. Uh, you know, certainly it will have uh, more attraction as we move forward, counselor Donovan.
Thank you, um, you know, just to clarify, I don't have, I obviously, I don't have anything written out now, um, I wasn't looking for anything big or any, you know. Massive special order, I was, I was quite literally, cause I sent Aaron a, a picture, Mister Kennedy, a picture. Of uh, one of the little signs that's on the pole in the uh, in some of the walking trails, and that's all I was looking for, was just sort of like a, like a tiny little. Square that just, if somebody's walking by, they don't just think, oh, quality lane, like you, gee, I I'm hoping I make sense, um, you know. I I just would like a little, a little blurb, that's all, just sort of stating, you know, what the message is behind it, but I really do like um, the deputy mayor's idea, and. I think that would be um, really nice as well, so I would like a sign, like a, a small little sign, but I'm, I'm. I'm hoping not to, to sound, or you know, to push my luck, I'm not trying to, to step on anybody's toes, but if we can investigate that and find a way to put. That into a motion, then I would amend my motion, I just, I'm not sure how to put that in there. That into a motion, then I would amend my motion, I just, I'm not sure how to put that in there.
If if I may, um, as a- again, we're going to be having different signage down there. As we're directing people to the splash pad and so forth, and it perhaps it's something that could be included in that piece of bulletin board that that uh. That would be m- my thought on that, um, Ms. Snow?
Well, I just add it proposed to the motion, um, and include a small explanation sign, providing a narrative to the meaning of. Equality Lane showing the town's commitment to inclusion and diversity, or something to that.
Yep, he's in agreement with that, uh, yes, and I think Mr. Loge had mentioned a budget on that as well. All right, on the question, we have a motion by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question, please vote now. On the question, Counselor Olson.
Sorry, your worship. I guess I'm just wrestling with this a little bit, uh. We're we're, we're trying to identify a pathway between a cul-de-sac and a parking lot. And I'm just wondering what the rationale is there, I mean. Uh, Equality Lane, I mean, what's that, what's that mean? There's nothing there. It's going to, it's going to an existing uh, uh. You know, skate park and and then to, it's it's just a continuation of parking of a parking lot. And I'm just wondering why uh, why we're doing that. If there's not enough, a better location for that sort of thought process, just a question.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan, uh, uh, Ms. Counselor Olson, Counselor Donovan wants to give some clarity.
Thank you, and it was brought up during the um, Planning Advisory Committee meeting as well. And I did actually um, include my rationale in the letter that I sent to council. Um, and it was basically that this is the heart of our town as, you know, as we've, we've heard before, this, the Arts and Culture Park. Is the heart of our town and if you look to where Equality Lane will be, it's pointing directly to Town Hall and I think. Every time people drive by that or every time people walk by that, where it points to Town Hall. It's it's almost like a symbol of our commitment to being inclusive, being, you know, diverse and and following. Um, you know, or not really following, but just sort of being inclusive to everybody and I. That's my uh, you know, rationale behind it and and certainly it, I did include. Um, you know, exactly what I said in my letter, so I I don't know if you're looking for any more information or, but.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. On the question, please vote now. Motion carries six one with a nay from Counselor Olson. Thank you, moving on to item eight C. Mr. Ashley Fraser, request for stop, for, uh, sorry, request for traffic calming on Cedar Grove Drive. Staff report from the Director of Engineering. Director of Engineering, did you want to comment on that?
Uh, your worship, I think the memo is self-explanatory. When we did the review of the different zones, you could see a definitive path as Mr. Fraser had actually identified in his correspondence to council. And as I mentioned a little earlier this evening. Because there are defined sections, it makes it a little easier to uh, introduce some level of traffic calming should the residents be on board. Um, that having been said, uh, as we mentioned at the initial request, we don't have a lot of these in the inventory. Um, at this time, I think what what we would be looking for is to make sure that we can continue the monitoring. If there are things that become available, whether it's relocation of the radar sign or some of the the humps, we would get those in place. But then that we would also communicate with the residents because uh, any sort of a traffic calming initiative does require a petition of residents if we were. To follow the policy directly. Um, so I I think that's the uh, the direction as as outlined in the memo is is relatively straightforward, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Loge. Uh, Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Yes, your worship, I would um, like to entertain a motion that the town of Quizpam Sis continue to monitor vehicle speed and volumes along Cedar Grove. Drive and where possible, in two thousand and twenty-two deploy temporary traffic calming devices to monitor their impact. In addition, staff prepare the two thousand and twenty-three budget to include this area. In our temporary traffic calming program and advise the Kennebecase's. Police Department of our observations and request their information and. I don't have any more, and and enforcement.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question. Seeing there are none, please vote now. Counselor Miller. Motion carries seven zero. Item number nine, correspondence, there is none. Uh, item number ten, bylaws. Ten A, proposed bylaw, number zero six two, a bylaw of the municipality of Quizpam Sis, respecting ride sharing. Consideration of third and final reading. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship, I'm prepared to give third reading to this if we're ready for that. We're uh, assuming. Pardon me?
I'm just trying to see if we still have quorum.
Yeah. We we could, we could maybe, uh, we could perhaps take a five-minute body break if that was something that would be, and then just regroup.
We'll take a five-minute, we'll take a five-minute body break, thank you. We'll be right back. Okay, we're back once again. Thank you. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. Whereas a notice has been published on the Town of Quizpam Sis website. Pursuant to section fifteen three and fifteen four of the Local Governance Act. Giving notice concerning proposed bylaw number zero six two, bylaw of the municipality of Quizpam Sis. Respecting ride sharing that will allow the operation of a vehicle for hire company and a vehicle for hire service, such as Uber or Lyft. Within the territorial limits of the Town of Quizpam Sis. And whereas council gave the proposed bylaw first and second reading at the July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Town of Quizpam Sis. The third and final reading be given to the proposed bylaw number zero six two. Bylaw of the municipality of Quizpam Sis respecting ride sharing.
Thank you, it's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Donovan. Counselor Donovan. On the question?
Uh, yeah, just on the question. Um, I just wanted to say that I'm I'm thrilled that, sorry, I'm thrilled that, um, you know, we're at a third reading, it's. This is something that, you know, I've looked at for quite a while and, and you know, I. I I think in in twenty twenty-two, it's it's something that's needed, you know, I've I've traveled a lot and and. Um, you know, been to cities that have Uber and Lyft and and other, you know, um, sort of knockoffs of those. Um, ride sharing companies and and they seem to work very well, you know, as as our town grows and and um. You know, we we go into a, or we grow into a a bigger, a bigger town, I think. Um, you know, different transportation options like these are are important and, uh, you know, I'm all for. Um, you know, providing residents a different way to get around and and uh, hopefully, uh. Hopefully to make their life a little bit easier, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Yes, thank you, your worship, through you to um, the Head of Engineering. Has um, the Town of Rossay passed such a bylaw? Or maybe it goes to um, Mr. Kennedy, I wasn't sure, it didn't, it didn't state it in here and. Um, just wanted to know.
Thank you, your worship, no, they have not.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, Counselor Miller.
I was just offering to read the bylaw before we vote, if uh, if nobody has, so.
Thank you, uh, so it was moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Donovan and. I'd like to thank on the question, I'd like to thank staff for all the work that they have done over the past few years on this because these are. Items that have been on the hopper for a while and uh, with. Everyone working together, it it has finally come to a moment of fruition, so thank you to staff for that. On the question, please vote now. Motion carries seven zero. Item number nine, correspondence, I don't see any this evening. Item number ten, bylaws. Oh, sorry, I missed that one? We're on ten B, thank you. Uh, bylaw number zero eleven dash twenty twenty-two, a bylaw respecting the undertaking. Of certain works as a local improvement on various streets in Quizpam Sis, consideration of final reading. And there is a. Motion there? Counselor Donovan, please.
Whereas, whereas a notice has been published on the Town of Quizpam Sis website. Pursuant to section fifteen three and fifteen four of the Local Govern- Governance Act. Giving notice concerning proposed bylaw number zero eleven uh, dash twenty twenty-two. A bylaw of the municipality of Quizpam Sis, respecting the undertaking of certain works as a local improvement on various streets in Quizpam Sis. And whereas first and second reading were given to said proposed bylaw at the July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Town of Quizpam Sis, the third and final reading be given to proposed bylaw number. Zero eleven dash twenty twenty-two, a bylaw of the municipality of Quizpam Sis respecting the undertaking. Of certain works as a local improvement on various streets in in Quizpam Sis.
It's been moved by Counselor Donovan, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question. Counselor Olson. Thank you. On the question, please vote now. Motion carries seven zero. Uh, item number eleven, new business. Hillcrest Holdings Limited and Langard Limited subdivision plan, future streets, Pids three zero one nine. One four three one and three zero one nine, one four four nine. Council assent. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship, I would move that council grant assent to the Hillcr- Hillcrest Holding Limited. And Langard Limited subdivision plan, so the plans can be stamped and signed by the town clerk and development officer. For registration in the provincial land registration system.
Thank you, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question. There are none, please vote now. Motion carries seven zero, thank you. Item eleven B, Deputy Mayor Schreier, consideration of six P M regular meeting start time on a permanent basis. Deputy Mayor Schreier, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, your worship, I'd like to put a motion forward and then um, have an opportunity for comments. Um, I would, uh, your worship, I would move that council start the regular council meeting at six P M. Instead of seven P M on a permanent basis. And that council conclude their public meetings by ten P M. And the procedural bylaw number zero three three be changed to reflect these changes.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier, it's been moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question. Counselor Olson, please.
No, no, sorry, your worship.
On the question, uh, Counselor Donovan.
Thank you, um, I'll just give my opinions because I'm sure everybody loves to hear them. Um, but my opinion is, you know, I I do enjoy, you know, having had a trial run of. The six P M uh, throughout the summer months, it it is a lot nicer, um. And and I do agree with the Deputy Mayor's um, comment of of ending council meetings at ten P M because we have been here until. Pretty near midnight some nights and I I do think that is a little rough, um. But I, I'm, where I'm struggling is, you know, there are people who work nine to five jobs and if you work a nine to five job. That means our committee of the whole meetings, if we do have one um, during our council meetings or the days that we're supposed to have a council meeting. It means they will start at. it means they will start at four thirty, if I'm not mistaken, and you know, people who have nine to five jobs, they're, they'll be missing out on important information that is, you know, voted on or or, um, you know, s- uh, shared during the committee of the whole meetings. I I really don't know if that's fair. Um, you know, I think the seven P M. Is w- been working for us. Um, I, but again, I I like the ten P M. Um, end time, that's fine with me, but I'm just not sure if I'm stuck on the the six um, P M. Start time. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan, and I would like to just insert in that that I've been on council now for eleven years and that uh, typically, uh, committee of the hall would begin at four thirty, sometimes beginning even earlier than that. As council, we know that Tuesday afternoon, starting at four thirty, uh, that's when we are typically supposed to be here. And I know Counselor Thompson, uh, used to drive a school bus before retirement and um, she had to make sure that she was here or or, you know, that sometimes was a a challenge, but that was the uh, that was the time set and uh, by having that, it does give us some some leeway so that when we do have a committee of the hall from four thirty onward, I've been here where we finished a couple of times committee of the hall early and had to sit here and wait for forty-five minutes until seven o'clock. So uh, so I certainly support beginning at six o'clock. Uh, Counselor Miller.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I I kind of go along with Counselor Donovan. There there's a couple reasons. I I agree with it at six o'clock in the summer because basically we're merging two meetings into one. And as we've all seen, sometimes we're not out of here till eleven o'clock. Um, even at seven o'clock, the generally we'd be done by nine, nine thirty. The the challenge I have is kind of twofold. So one, I work Eastern Standard Time most of the time. It's because I, the everybody I deal with is different. So, by me even getting here at five o'clock, you'll notice I'm usually the last one in. I'm just trying to get here and I'm usually cutting meetings short or trying that. If we start at six, in the summer, it's easier for me to cut meetings short because half people take vacation because we've got two whole months of uh, vacation time. So when the winter time, um, and I've been lucky this year, I've been traveling as much as stuff. It's, it's so if somebody's nine to five and let's say they are working in town because may- maybe nobody here does right now, but somebody could be uh, in the next four years, if you ju- to get off once in a while is not bad, but if you got to get off twice every month and try to get here early and the option would be miss committee of the whole. Most times you'd show up at six, but then that kind of defeats trying to be here for committee hole, and we can't really push committee hole to the end of the meeting because sometimes things in committee of the whole need to be brought up, so um, I was okay with the trial and I'm okay with the summers, quite frankly, because I I have more leverage, but also I've noticed here in the last little while that these meetings are not an hour and a half. We're we're here for three, four hours, so summertime, I'm okay. The, I I struggle changing it for the, for the winter time for for now and and sometimes too, we don't start our committee hole till six thirty, which is fine, so there's no separate meeting and yes, I know it's tougher on the staff, but for me, I can finish, eat at home, I can get here, I can finish my meeting, so uh, I prefer the seven. That's, that's all I can say. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Counselor Olson.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, your worship. Um, I wasn't going to speak on this except to say that I uh, I support the six o'clock and the ten-hour time changes. I think that they're uh, I think that they're best for myself anyway, and I think that they would uh, that they would meet the uh, meet the times for the residents also.
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Uh, Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship. Um, actually, my question is directed to the town clerk. I'm just wondering in terms of our procedural bylaw, um, you know, I guess if we have a long agenda item, like how flexible is it that, you know, do we have to change it in our procedural bylaw or could we, you know, have a bit more flexibility based on, you know, agenda items, et cetera, as long as it's posted on the website?
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Uh, Ms. Snow?
Yes. Excuse me, your worship, through you. Currently, our procedural bylaw does note that our regular meeting begins at seven P M. So we would have to revise the wording. Perhaps we would leave it flexible, whatever is council's wishes, but right now it does note seven, so if there is a change to that on a permanent basis, then the procedural bylaw would need to reflect that. And also currently, our procedural bylaw has eleven P M. As the curfew time, not ten, which the deputy mayor is proposing.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. Uh, Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Uh, thank you, your worship. It's uh, been a great um, discussion and I'll just add my two cents in and um, I I looked at this uh, as we went through the summer and saw um, the six o'clock start and I, you know, we had a lot of um, several public meetings and um, some heavy agendas and I felt that, you know, even at that, we were going till ten o'clock at night. So, uh, in my mind, a good governance is allowing accessibility to to the public at a reasonable time um, to hear what's going on on council and so that we can assess everything. And so thus, um, s- starting a little earlier in my mind allows that to happen. Plus, ending at a reasonable time so you're not making um, rash decisions or you're pressed to make a decision before, you know, you're running out of time. So that was my reasoning behind it and I I appreciate council's discussion on this matter.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schreier. Uh, Counselor Olson.
No.
No?
Sorry.
Okay. Counselor Luck, please.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, I I guess in terms of um, you know, some of the concerns, I think having um, a drop dead deadline, we're going to be pressed to make decisions, and I think in the past what's happened is, you know, council has voted to extend the timeline, so that's another option. And I guess the evaluator in me kind of cautions that we are taking a six o'clock time and evaluating it where we've taken two meetings and put it into one over the summer. So of course, the meetings seem very daunting and long. I I wonder if they'd feel the same if we actually have two meetings per month. And I also would like to comment on, I guess, being, you know, I guess, team focused or governance where, you know, people came on council with a certain procedural bylaw, and I think if not everyone on council can get on board with this decision, I think it's not, you know, in terms of accessibility for everybody, being um, you know, empathetic and understanding of people's commitments already that they had when they came on council knowing it was seven o'clock. I think that needs to be taken into consideration as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. And uh, certainly, I I, as we evolve and and grow as a community, uh, I I do think it's also very important for us to consider staff and uh, uh, the time that they put into preparing a uh, council agenda. It takes a lot of work, a lot of people and many long hours. And uh, to be here till, and I know I've been here till eleven thirty at night, uh, with with the, and granted, it was the summer agendas, but I find that that is inappropriate to be working till eleven thirty on very um, very important issues. Uh, also, you know, um, I think that the the procedural bylaw can be uh, amended and uh, I personally, I feel that the the six o'clock start time is conducive to anyone who uh, who is typically here at four thirty for a committee of the whole meeting. And that is the time that I have set always in my calendar. Uh, you know, at various times when I was working as well. Uh, as far as reaching the public, the public can now view our council proceedings on YouTube. If there, every meeting is streamed. So uh, so it isn't a case of not being able to have the media, not being able to have the public. Uh, as you can see, there are no media here tonight because they do look at the uh, the streamed version. So uh, I I think that consideration also has to be made. On the question, uh, Counselor Luck.
Thank you, worship. I guess I'm I'm still wondering if there's flexibility in looking at um, you know, the committee of the whole agenda. Um, you know, and if there is flexibility in terms of the way that the procedural bylaw is written so that it might not be, I guess I'm just trying to be um, supportive of everyone on council where other pe- you know, people have commitments. Um, where if it's a lighter agenda for the committee of the whole, where, you know, we have the flexibility of making a six o'clock, you know, we we would know that and being able to post it so people would know it starts at six when we don't have to be here maybe as early for committee the whole. And then when we have a heavy committee, the whole agenda where we know, you know, we we can't get here any earlier, that we would still stick with the four thirty and then the seven o'clock start or I I guess I'm just wondering if there's a bit of wiggle room so we can make sure that um, we can support everybody on council that does have work commitments. And again, going into council, they, you know, it was you know, seven o'clock as per our procedural bylaws.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. Um, Mrs. Snow.
The committee of the whole um, agenda does not have a start time noted in the procedural bylaw. So we do try to practice flexibility with that. If it's a light committee, then we tend not to start till, you know, sometimes it's been half an hour before the open session, just depending on the items.
Thank you, Ms. Snow. So we have a motion on the table, uh, moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Luck. Uh, I'm sorry, Counselor Bigger. I was looking at Counselor Luck when I was looking over that way, trying to figure out. Uh, okay, so uh, can we have the vote, please? Motion carried four three. Uh, those in favor, uh, Deputy Mayor Schreier, Thompson, Bigger and Olson. Those against, counselors Donovan, Luck and Miller. Thank you. Item number twelve, reports. Just a reminder through reports uh, that we do have the opening celebration on August the twenty-fifth, two days after the the opening of the reopening of the uh, Canopica's Public Library. So then on August twenty-fifth, between six and seven, we have a celebration of the opening and everyone is welcome to that. Counselor Bigger.
Your worship, I would move that reports be received and filed.
It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Olson on the question. Please vote now. Motion carries seven zero. Business arising from committee of the whole, there wasn't any. Hope everyone finds joy in these dog days of summer as we move forward, and I will now ask for an adjournment.
Moved.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Schreier on the question. No question, please vote now. Motion carries seven zero. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.